Okay, everyone, back for a summary and we're gonna get things started. To give a quick update where we are. Three board members are now on the call. Monty in my front office is still working with Ms. Sojourner to see if we can get her up and up and up and running it into the meeting, but we also want to be mindful of everybody's time to get things moving here. So, welcome everyone to our Board of Supervisors of Elections meeting kickoff meeting for 2023. For those of you that really don't know me, my name is Rich Charnovich. I'm your town clerk. I've been with Bladensburg for almost two years now. I started here right after the 2021 election. So that's probably why you didn't see me back then. I started here towards the end of October after the last election was was held. So I look forward to working with with all of you on this process as we move forward here to 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 certify our candidates and hold the election. This is an extremely important part of our of our democratic process here in general, here in Bladensburg and in general as a whole in the in the in the country and the county. So really appreciate everybody being here today. Just a couple of quick, one of whatever housekeeping thing before we get started, just to let everybody know. So our our video is disabled. You're not missing anything on that. This meet this meeting is going to be audio only and is going to be recorded. On the call today, as I mentioned, we have three board members. Are 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 those who applied for candidacy? We're all have also been all all provided the link to the meeting. And I see a few of those, a few of those potential candidates on the on the call this afternoon. So welcome. Also from our team in the town clerk's office, we have Monterred Camano and Ray Jeffries. Monty and Ray are here to help help us along with with this with this with this meeting. And here for here to here to support our town clerk team as we as we take on this take on this endeavor. So with all that said, again, sorry, we are are a few minutes late and we will get started here. So I'm gonna call this call this meeting to order August 23rd, 2023 at 1:00 p.m. Again, we have a quorum present. Three members of the four on the board are present at today's meeting. And number two on our agenda today. Let me do something real quickly here. Perhaps one moment. So if you if you're on your computer screen right now, you also should be able to see our our agenda for today's meeting. Not sure if you're on your phone or on your computer. But it should be popped up on your screen today's agenda if you don't have a hard copy in front of you as I'm as I'm going through referencing this. So we just covered number one on our agenda today. Number two, we are needing to appoint a chair and a vice chair for our Board of Elections this year. So I don't do we have any calls for a and it was anyone like the service chair or vice chair call for a nomination in that in that regard today?
Mr. Charnovich, this is Ms. Williams speaking. I think we should wait until Ms. Sojourner has been connected so she could have some input at this point for her choice. Of Chair and Vice Chair.
Okay, that that makes that makes a lot of sense. So I know Monty in our front office is still working with her to get her connected. So maybe maybe a question, a question for the board is. Maybe how how long do we want to 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 see if we can get this moving or is everybody willing to hang out a minute while I I move over to help assist Monty to and Ms. Sojourner to get online before we proceed? Or? What what is your pleasure, Ms. Williams? Was that was that is that your your are you okay to hang around for a little bit or?
Yes, I can, and I think that there may be other business at hand that we can take care of at this point.
Yeah, that'd be fine, that'd be fine.
Because I think her input would be necessary.
Agreed, agreed. And I guess. Just I guess a quick shout out to you, Ms. Williams. I know you've been a part of this process now for multiple times. So your your experience is certainly invaluable for all of us. So and unless I'm mistaken, I believe Ms. Ms. Lundie and Ms. Lundie and Ms. Saunders, this is your first your first time on the board. And I believe Ms. Sojourner has been on the board previously as well. So to the four of us, I previously served on the board, unless I'm mistaken. So your your input, Ms. Williams, I certainly take that into consideration. And I see Ms. Lundie has her has her hand raised?
Yes, thank you, Clerk Charnovich. I agree with Board Member Williams that we can wait for our fellow colleague to come on board.
Thank you, Board Member Lundie. Hang tight a few minutes, please. I'm gonna go check on the status, one moment. Okay, everyone, I think we are we are set to go. Just so for everybody on the calls knowledge, I have a Board Member Sojourner on speakerphone in my office. So she can hear through the computer here in my office as well as me. And should we have any audio challenges in either direction? I will be a be a go between to make this work. So thank you for everyone again for coming today to the to the Board of Supervisors kickoff meeting for 2023. Ms. Sojourner, for your sake, I just gave a brief introduction of everybody that was on the call. So we have four board members on the call, yourself. Board Member Lundie, Cardo Lundie, Board Member Lynn Saunders and Board Member Pat Williams. Also on the call, we have a few of the those who applied to be candidates on the call today. And we have two of our team members in the clerk's office who you've been working with a little bit earlier, Ms. Camano, Mark Monty and Mr. Jeffries, who are here to help with this process. So with all that said, welcome once more. And again, thank you to everyone for your patience as we as we kick this off. So we moved on to item two on the agenda. And the Ms. Sojourner of the board asked that we get you connected before we move on to the next item on the agenda after the welcome. And that is the appointment of the Chair and the Vice Chair. So with that, I was going to call for a discussion or a motion or a nomination for anybody who would possibly want to be the Chair of the of the board this year. So with that. Anybody would like to step up?
Can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I will support this, well, this is Judy Sojourner, but I will support the Vice Chair and the Chairman. I cannot take a position, either one, because I have certain recently developed health issues that I need to go to doctors. And I think that that might keep me from performing as an officer, but I certainly will support anyone or the ones who are nominated and accept the position. What I wanted to say.
Okay, I don't know if everybody heard that on the call or not, but to do a quick translation.
We can hear her, yeah.
Great, that that thank you, Board Member Lundie, thank you. Thank you. So with that said, does anybody else like to nominate someone or nominate yourself to be the the Chair as a starting point?
I didn't hear what Ms. Lundie said, what did she say?
Oh, no, I wasn't sure if if everybody could hear you on on the call. So I was starting to translate what you were saying, but Ms. Lundie, wherever Lundie stepped in and said that she could hear.
Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Williams, Board Member Williams, did you have your hand raised? You might be on mute.
Okay, there we go, thank you. I forgot to. If there aren't any objections. With the other members, I will continue. Otherwise, feel free to make another suggestion.
All right, can we can we call for a motion for Board Member Williams to continue serving as the as the Chair for 2023?
Yes, I call for a motion.
Thank you, was that was that was that you, Board Member Saunders or Board Member Lundie?
It was Board Member Saunders and yes, I called for a motion for her to continue as Chair.
Okay.
Board Member Lundie seconds the motion.
All right, thank you both.
And Board Member Sojourner votes for Ms. Pat Williams to continue as Chairman.
Great, so all in all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? No, so the ayes have it, so. Sounds great, Board Chair Williams. Now with that, I know this is like I know you've been doing this for several elections now. I can turn the meeting over to you, Board Chair, and I'm here certainly here to help and support whatever we need as we go forward. I don't know if you want to call for a motion for a Vice Chair at this point or just proceed as the Chair since we only have four members on the board. I guess I can leave that up to you to make that decision.
Yes, we can call for a motion to have a Vice Chair. It wouldn't hurt. Again, I will leave that up to the other three members to make a suggestion for, you know, forward. If you would rather that I make this suggestion and you all vote on it, we can do that also.
Okay. Based on what Ms. Board Member Sojourner said earlier. It's as far as leadership leadership position on the board, it sounds like that we need, we would either it would either be Board Member Lundie as Vice Chair or Board Member Saunders as Vice Chair. That's what it sounded like to me, so. I don't know, either one of Board Member Lundie or Board Member Saunders, are you willing to anyone willing to take that on? If not, it's okay too, but that's what it sounds like we're we're where we're at. I see Board Member Lundie, you have your hand up?
Yes, Clerk Charnovich. At this time, I can I would not be able to take on the Vice Chair role because I do I am a caregiver for my husband. And if I have to pop in and out, I don't want to have that be a hindrance to the board.
Thank you, Board Member Lundie.
I am willing to support. I I work full time, so I am just, you know, seeing this process right now. I wouldn't be comfortable being Vice Chair at this time. I was hoping that maybe Board Member Williams would be able to just lead the way and we could all three of us support her.
Excuse me, Mr. Charnovich.
Yes, Board Member Sojourner.
I was gonna say, we're such a small group, maybe we don't need a Vice Chair. For any problems that might come up, we might be, I mean, I don't foresee any problems, but if anything comes up, we might be able to work it out amongst ourselves as opposed to having a second in command. I don't know if that's, you know, that will be approved or not, but. That's my, those are my thoughts.
Yeah, I think I think as as long as Chair Williams is okay with that, newly newly named Chair Williams, I'm okay with it to proceed that way. Chair Williams, I see every hand raised?
Yes, I would like to say thank you to all. For your support and I certainly understand sickness in infamly having to be a caregiver. I do understand, you know, the working class people because I used to be as one as well. I'm retired now, but I do understand. When you know, it's one of those things we all have to be supportive of one another. And the trials and tribulations that we all go through in life, we have to support family, family first, and then we move on. However. I think. Member Sojourner is correct at this point. We are few in number, and I think we can make it work with the numbers that we have. We've done it before, we can do it again. It's a challenge, and if you're up for the challenge and being super busy and pitching in where you can when it's needed, then, you know, we'll support you there too.
Great, that sounds good. So I believe that we then are, we can proceed. We are going to go with Chair Chair Williams. And at this time, we are gonna all work as a team and proceed with no Vice Chair for the time being. So that's that that's perfectly fine. And with that, we can move on to item three, which is a timeline. And I guess one question, logistical question, Chair Williams, now that now that we know you're the Chair. Do you have the agenda up on your on your screen or in your hard copy or do you need to pull it up on the screen? I just wanna make sure I I know we have what you have there.
Yes, no problem, I have it up on my laptop. I can see the agenda.
Great, great, thank you, Chair. So number three on our agenda today was just a review of the. Debt election deadline timing. So I guess one thing I did want to mention, another housekeeping thing quickly, was that I I, for the most part, crafted today's agenda based on re reviewing and reading through minutes from 2021. As I mentioned earlier, I had started here right after the 2021 election. So I wanted to read through the minutes from the 2021 era. I think there were like, I think it was three, four or five meetings, I believe, four or five meetings that were held leading up to the election. And I went through those and tried to get a sense of what was what was on the agendas and talked about in the minutes. So I wanted to point that out for everyone. So with that said, I don't know if everybody had a chance to take a look at number three. Are there any questions on number three or the the deadline to file, which is 45 days before the election, was this past Friday? So that just happened to Friday at 5:00 p.m. on the 18th of August. The the register to vote deadline is 30 days before the election. That's letter C within number three on your agenda. Oh, Ms. Chair Williams, sorry.
Yes. Excuse me, you're questioning again, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, sorry, you had your hand raised, I'm sorry, was that before before or did you?
Sorry, I I was trying to get it to go away, but it didn't seem to wanna move.
Oh, that's okay. You're just stretching, it's all good.
Well, yeah, I do need to do that, thank. Okay.
You're 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 so excited for me to name the Chair again, you just don't want to put your hand down, right?
Oh, yeah, I'm excited.
Just kidding, just kidding. But yeah, okay, so yeah. Yeah, register to vote deadline 30 days, which is September 2nd. Absentee ballot applications are already available. They became made available on on the 18th of August. The applications themselves for anyone who wants to vote absentee, that has been posted. That's been posted, I believe, on our website and on our on our on on our, I think, our social media too. It's been posted. So those applications are already now available. Obviously, the ballot is not available, but but the the application to receive an absentee ballot is available. Absentee ballots need to be received back to the to the. Submitted. Letter E within number three by the close of the polls on on Election Day, which is which is 7:00 p.m. Based on the town charter, seven, the town charter indicates that the election polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Election Day. I did notice that the last year, 2021 election, I noticed there must have been an extension of time from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. for an extra hour. Maybe we can dive into that further as the the meetings and the and the time goes along. I don't know, I'm sure I'm sure Chair Williams, you may have a recollection of that. But according to the charter, it's the election hours are seven, seven to seven. And the obvious one, Election Day, October 2nd, 2023, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. That's letter F within number three on your. On your agenda for today. We have. Board Member Lundie has her hand raised?
Yes, yes, Mr. Charnovich. For purposes of order of the meeting, did you want us to ask questions as we going or you want us to wait until you ask a question? Or comments?
So I am going to. I guess I'm gonna work in tandem with Chair Williams. This is our first meeting working together, so I want to be I want to be mindful and careful not to step on a step on her her toes. So I I mean, I am fine addressing questions at any point of an agenda item, but I would also defer to Chair Williams if she if she's okay with that that process. Are you okay with that, Chair Williams, or do you want to have handle questions in a certain way?
I think it's perfectly okay. We can use the hand, the raised hand on the virtual screen if we have questions. Preferably. At the end of the sentence, then I think we can take questions or comments. That shouldn't be a problem.
That sounds good, and I will I will do my best to monitor the hand raising. As well as, I know Mr. Jeffries on the call today is has I I made him a co-organizer for the meeting. So hopefully he can he and Ms. Camano can help keep me on task too if I miss something as far as the hands raised or things of that nature. So hopefully that answers your question, Board Member Lundie.
Yes, absolutely, thank you.
Oh, yeah, you're you're welcome. Did you have a question at this point or doubt you were just asking about how we were handling the questions in general?
I was asking in general.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you, Board Member. Okay, so. With that said, we can move into number four on our agenda for today. Just to lay the just to lay out the. The process for us. Here here in in 2023, we have two two town council seats up, one in Ward 1 and one in Ward 2. Those are the seats that are up this year. And the. Those who applied for the to be on the ballot were listed on today's agenda, just their names in alphabetical order per ward. So. You can you'll see there's though, see them there listed and as as number four on the on the agenda. With with that, I would maybe ask, we could just, you know, dive right into things or Chair Williams, I was kind of curious as this. Where your experience is invaluable, I don't know how you approach this at the. In 2021, if you. Do you go candidate by candidate? Do you just ask questions on certain candidates? We may need more information to be to be to, I know there may be, there may be more information needed for each candidate. As if at an upcoming future meeting in the coming weeks, we can we can track all that. Or what is what is your what is your pleasure with? And I know you and you and Board Member Sojourner have been through this this process here in Bladensburg.
Thank you very much, Mr. Charnovich. I think. If my memory serves me correctly, what we did is we looked at each candidate to make sure that the all of the lines and pages of all of the forms were complete. And I think that's probably why there was a delay in 2021 because there were some forms with some candidates that had missing or incomplete information. So we would allow them at that point, after they were contacted, two to three days to get that. Missing information or incomplete information. Back to us so that we could do further review. And I think that's the most effective way to handle it, to do it candidate by candidate. And that way, once all of the information from each candidate. And we voted on it to make sure that everything was intact. We voted on how to go forward with the next step. So that we could get all of this information compiled and be ready for the election. And I don't know if a member Sojourner has anything to add to that. Please jump in if you have any comments or if it's something that I have forgotten. Seems like 2021 was so long ago, my goodness, really hasn't been that long.
Board Member Sojourner, did you, were you able to hear Chair Williams? Board Member Sojourner? She's still up on my, she's still up on my phone as being as listening in and here. It's still registering the call with her phone number. Let me dial her back, one moment, please. let me dial her back, uh, one moment, please.
Can you hear me?
Uh, yes, I, I can, I can hear you now, I lost you there for a second, it seemed, uh, something happened with the phone, but, um, you were on, but I didn't hear you, uh, you can hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Okay, great, great, um, so I don't.
I heard your question, and I was in the middle of response, and I was saying in regard to Chair Williams', um, request, and I'm agreeing with her, that we did go through each candidate one by one and filled in any blanks, and asked them to fill in any blanks of missing information. And I'm disagreeing with what she said, yes, the process that was going through in twenty-one.
Okay, uh, tha- thank you, Board Member Sojourner, so, um, I know Board Member Saunders and Board Member, uh, Lundie, uh, were not on the board at that time. Uh, did you have any process questions based on historical, uh, perspective? Um, or are you, um, is that, is that, you know, you're, I guess you're in agreement to, to move forward in that manner, just want to make sure everybody's on the same page, um.
Uh, yes, I'm in agreement to move forward.
Cool.
Thank you, yes.
Great, thank you all.
Okay, I would like to make a comment if I may.
Yes, Chair.
And I, I think it would be a good idea that each one of our, um, Chair, uh, Chair, each one of our members would take a look at the candidates very closely, and on the next meeting, let us know, let us talk about what is missing from each candidate's application so that we could move forward very quickly, because time is moving very fast, and we don't want to do too much delaying uh, in terms of getting the information back from the candidate. So if each one of us uh, could look at each candidate's application and make sure, page by page, that all information has been completed. If there are any blanks, please make note of the candidate's name and the area that is blank within the application so that we can contact them and find out if it was intentional or if it was in, a mistake. Because I don't think it would be a good idea to leave information missing or blank on the candidate's forms that, you know, because we are not allowed to fill in the blanks for anyone. We're not allowed to write in information for any candidate, it doesn't matter who it is.
Yes, that, I would be great, because I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to go. I had logged on at one, but I do have a meet, another meet, I didn't know how long this would take. And so I can bring that to the next meeting, but my next meeting is coming up soon, and I have to prepare for that. So I don't know how much more we were gonna do this today, or how much longer this meeting was gonna last. Um, I'm like, right in the middle of my workday, and schools are about to open Monday, so I am really, really swamped right now.
Oh, my goodness. Uh, I, I do, uh, understand the need for you, uh, to leave the meeting at this point, um, but if there are any questions that you have.
I think I just wanted to know the next meeting, and I just wanted to know, are they going to all be during the day? Um, I'm the director of Charter Schools for our district, so that's, I'm going to need the meetings to be later in the afternoon.
Probably the afternoon.
Wondered what, um, I prefer them at four o'clock, five o'clock, those times, times that is not in session.
Okay, I, I think maybe we can work something out, we can work something out, because I certainly understand your position, um.
Yeah, I, um,
Yeah.
Yeah, I was able to listen while I was driving to a site, but I was, I do need to go in now and get ready for students and families. So, um, if you could just communicate with me the next, the date of the next meeting, that would be great.
Well, I certainly wish you a good year, and a good first day of next week.
Okay, thank you.
And we will be in touch, uh, via email to let you know when the next virtual or in-person meeting will be.
Okay, great, thank you, yeah.
Uh, Board, uh, Board Member Saunders, before you drop off, if you don't mind, a quick question, did you, uh, uh, is your preference a ver- virtual or in-person, or you're impartial, it's based on your schedule? Is virtual better for you?
Virtual is fine, yeah, virtual is fine, virtual is great, that's not a problem at all.
Okay. I'm, I'm just taking notes, and you said four or five P M.?
Yeah. But four o'clock virtual would be great.
Got you, I will, I will, personally, I'll make whatever, whatever the pleasure of the board is, I will just make it work for my end, but, um, uh, it's, I'm, we're making notes on, on your, on your best availability, and I see also that Board Member Lundie has her hand raised.
Thank you, before Ms. Saunders has to leave, yes, thank you, um, Clerk Chonovich. So, um, just something to keep in mind, um, because we do, we may have others visiting, I mean, it's, you know, let me, let me scratch that, just to keep in mind, if we're gonna do a virtual meeting while next meeting, if we're not gonna go over the candidate, um, forms, uh, today, we would be, would you be able to put those on the screen so we can look at it line by line, or, or you just want us to come with, um, our comments or whatever, but it would be nice to, if we're not gonna do an in-person meeting, to be able to actually have everybody to see the form, or how do, how do we want to think about that, um, Chair Williams?
I think if you, do you already have a copy via email of each candidate?
Yes, yes, I do. Yeah.
Okay, then my suggestion would be, if you have a copy of it, um, to go through each candidate's application, and for each candidate, you can make a note. Write their name down, write down what's missing. If nothing is missing, uh, you can also make a note for that person, and then we can talk about it if we, you know, the next virtual meeting. And, you know, ju- have a consensus between the, the four of us.
Mr. Chonovich.
So that, you know, every, everything is compiled evenly and complete.
Yes, one moment.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Uh, Chair, Chair Williams, but Board Member Sojourner had a question?
Yes.
Um, it, it, it's a statement and a question. I did already look over the, um, application that Mr. Chonovich put on the email, and I did have a question in general, to all of the candidates, or the ones who are, are, um, um, yeah, I said that there was some listening in on this meeting that seems to be missing information in regard to, uh, part A and in regard to, uh, residency, and I didn't know if that was a requirement or something that was optional. Um, unless I'm reading these questions incorrectly, it is asking whether or not you own or rent in the town of Bladensburg. And I was wondering if my interpretation of that part of the question is, was incorrect, because all but one, I think it's Mr. Abdul D I A K I T E, D I A K I T E, uh, fills in that information, so that's my question going forward. Um, you can either address it now or address it at the next meeting. But I did already look over the application of the candidate, and, um, there was some information missing in that area.
Excuse me, um, I think what, at this point, since you have started looking at some of the candidates' application, that you should make a note uh, for those areas that, uh, you have questions on along with missing or no information so that we can all take a look at, you can take a, look at all of the candidates, and each, each board member can do the same thing. And then when we have the next meeting, then we, we can compare notes. And then if the,
Okay, that's fine.
And as far as residency is concerned, if memory serves me correctly, I think we're supposed, I think each candidate is supposed to be a resident in Bladensburg. Because this came up once before with another candidate. Uh, I believe it was in twenty twenty-one. So I think that's something that we need to, to look at, I don't think it matters whether you are uh, a renter or a home buyer, but you must be a resident in the town of Bladensburg. I hope that answered your question.
All right, well, Mr. Chonovich, you can tell her that, um, it's, that was the only, I'll go through the, the applications again, but that was the area where I think that there was the most information missing. I think everyone is a resident, but for some reason, when it came to that portion, section A, for some reason, the questions were not filled in, and it couldn't be just an oversight, or maybe they felt that they didn't have to do it, since they all live in Bladensburg, so.
Uh, for, for clarification, if you don't mind, uh, Mrs., um, Council Member Sojourner, letter A under, uh, under the Financial Disclosure Form?
Yeah.
I'm just taking a quick look now, but I, I agree with Chair Williams about, um, each, each member making their notes, um, making their notes. In fact, uh, Chair Williams, if you're okay with it too, if everybody wanted to, I can be your, I, I, I am the liaison, uh, so, uh, if anybody, if, if comments want to come to me, I can then disseminate, uh, compile and disseminate to all. If that's your pleasure, Chair Williams, I'm happy to do that for everybody. Um, uh, if not, that's different, you want, you want to approach it a different way, that's fine too.
No, 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 I think, I think that's perfectly fine, I have no problem with that, that would be nice, that would be good.
Great. Thank you. Um,
Okay, I can do that.
Okay, wonderful, that works. Um, and we'll take a look at that, and then I see Mrs., uh, uh, Council Member, Council Member, wrong meeting, hello, uh, so many meetings, uh, Board Member Lundie, um,
No problem.
Hand raised.
Yeah, no problem. So, um, 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 Chair Williams, we, we did have this on our agenda, on our agenda, as an agenda item, but I understand how you would like to, um, you know, have us to come back to, to it, but I just wanted to just make a friendly note to keep in mind that we gotta do this as soon as, you know, as soon as, uh, um, possible because we want to get the ballots out and, um, you know, collect those, do the, you know, bios and all that kind of stuff, but, um, so I guess you're gonna be working with Mr., um, Clerk Chonovich for our next agenda to make sure that we'll be able to actually, um, complete the agenda items as, um, given to us.
Absolutely.
All right, fabulous, thank you. That's why you're the chair?
No. No, it isn't. No, I think it's a good, it is a very good idea, idea that we get things moving along, because, um, if our candidates can drop off their bios to the town uh, office, that would be great, otherwise, I guess they could rely on the post office snail mail. Or if, uh, I think it would also be acceptable that they could send an email with their bios attached. Anything to expedite and to keep things moving so that we will have a smooth transition to the next step. That's what's most important, so we will be ready moving forward, we will be ready and everything will be in hand by five P M. On the twenty-fifth of September. And actually, before the twenty-fifth of September, because, um, we actually need to have the bios. Um, I would say by the second of September, because it needs to go up on social media to the website, the town's website. It needs to be posted in the town's email blast. It needs to be posted to, uh, the town's Facebook page. So we want to have everything in, we don't want to piecemeal, we want everything in on time in a timely manner, and I believe a date was set in twenty twenty-one uh, to have all bios from all candidates sent in so that we could have them posted by the next date. Um, this, I'm sorry if it sounds like I'm hesitant in my speech, but I'm trying to speak and think of the things and the steps that we did in twenty twenty-one to keep things moving. And I would like to see the same thing happen for the twenty twenty-three election.
So Chair, Chair Williams, the, uh, uh, when I took, took a look through the minutes, uh, the minutes of the September seventh, twenty twenty-one meeting, um, and I'm not sure, uh, it's quite possible that, um, you may have been slightly behind due to obtaining candidate info based on reading the minutes, but, uh, the candidate biographies were due Wednesday, September fifteenth at noon. Um, that sounds like it might be a little late based on your outline just now. Um, and you also, in, in, the, the, the minutes also indicated that, I guess, the number of words was increased from a hundred words to two hundred, um, in the candidate bio. Um, uh, but I, I wanted to make, make, make sure I let you know that, that I did see that in the minutes.
Yes, um, I don't have a copy of the minutes in front of me, however, uh, you are correct. The, the wording, uh, the number of words in the bio was increased to two hundred. Um, some bios can be shorter. It just depends on how much information you have uh, that you need to share or want to share about yourself. Um, but two hundred was the maximum. Two hundred, I believe, was the maximum.
Thank you, um. I see Miss, uh, Board Member, uh, Lundie has her hand raised, and I saw Mr. Mr. Jeffries in our, in the, in the, uh, Town Clerk Office had his hand raised as well.
Yeah, um, Mr. Jeffries, you can go before me if you would like, if you still have a question or comment.
Yes, good afternoon, everyone, how's everyone doing? Um, my only question was, I think someone threw out the September second deadline for the candidate bios, but I was, and that's a Saturday, but I was wondering, did you want it to be next Wednesday or next Friday, next Friday is September first?
I would, I would like to see the bios in no later, not later than September, um, ten, where is my calendar, I don't have my calendar uh, on this computer.
I have a calendar, Ms., um, Williams, you need me to help you, what you, what you looking for?
Yeah, I'm, I'm pulling my calendar up right.
Okay.
Here it is, okay, the second is on a two, is on a Wednesday. I would, and that's, what is that, Labor Day weekend or at beginning of school?
Wait a minute, you're talking about September, the September second is a Saturday?
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong calendar, forgive me.
Well, Miss um Williams, don't forget about the headshots along with the bios whenever we get to that.
Yes, that's my next question, the the pictures and headshots.
Right, because at the time of submission for the bios, they do need to send a photo along with it. We're not gonna piecemeal this. We're not going to piecemeal this. We had a problem in twenty twenty one. Um not getting everything we needed when we asked for it, so I would like to allow them. Time. Doesn't have to be the prettiest picture in the world, doesn't have to be the worst either, but. You know, provide it along with your bio. When you submit the bio, the picture must be submitted as well. Because we want this up and moving as fast as possible, so my September date. Would be September uh seventh. By five P M, September seven.
All right, thank you.
And then I would like to see the email blast go out. To all social media platforms that the the town has. I would like to see that moved forward. Not later than. The following week, which would be the fourteenth. Of September. If if possible. I know we have two, four, we have five candidates. And I think that should be doable if everybody sends in uh their photo and bio. So that we could get things going and the sooner we get the emails out to them. Requesting this information and most definitely bold it, put it in red. The due date. For submission. And hopefully, you know, they won't have a problem making the deadline.
Uh Chair Chair Williams, I can I can get that email out uh later, that after this meeting later today. Um I we can get it out to the uh candidates.
Fantastic, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, Mr. Uh Board Member Lundie, is that your hand raised from before or current?
No, no, it's it's good. I was waiting till Mister Jeffries finished. I'm ready to go. So um I don't know if this is the right time to make this statement, but we, since we did talk about the election deadlines and timelines. I, my request, um Chair Williams, um of the uh liaison and staff is that. We be provided. With a list of delivered, you know, delivered absentee applications. And um. The absentee um ballots that obviously, because my reasoning for this is. Because on Election Day, we need to know who has already voted. So we don't have someone voting by absentee, who has voted by absentee ballot, voting in person. So I would like to have that list for the board members. Um and or volunteers, but especially for us. So we can make sure that we know how many absentee ballots have, uh applications have been delivered. And um how many absentee ballot um ballots have been received once we get the ballots, you know, done. That's what, that's my ask. Yes, ma'am.
Hold on one second. Absentee ballots. Will come in the mail and we will not open those ballots until the doors are closed. On Election Day. They are placed in a box. And they are opened separately. Once everybody has come in from the street to vote. Then after the doors are closed at seven P M. The absentee ballots are opened by one person. And stacked, and then they are scanned into the machine separately. So we will not have a compilation of everything going into one pile. There will be two separate piles of ballots. One for the absentee. And one for the the uh in-person voting. Now. I'm trying to remember how we handled it. Sometimes what happens is a person will mail their ballot and then they'll change their minds. And decide, oh, you know what, I think I'm gonna go in. I have time. I'm gonna go and place my ballot in person. If they say something to you. That they mailed their ballot, make sure you get their name. Because we can't open that envelope, but if we have their name and once those uh. Mail-in ballots have been opened, we can pull that ballot. That ballot that was mailed in by, say, Jane Doe. Jane Doe came in. And she has the right to vote in person. Her mail-in ballot is no longer valid. We cannot throw that ballot away. We have to hold on to that ballot. We will put a note on that ballot that the this person came in and voted in person. So no ballot is open. Once it's been mailed and it's been received. By the town clerk in the mail. Those ballots cannot be opened. Until close of business, close of voting day.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you so much. Can I ask a follow-up question? Can I ask, thank you so much for that process because that sounds excellent. Um I have a follow-up question to your comment. So those absentee ballots, once we get those ready, the town gets those ready, um on our beha- on our behalf. Um the ones who are walk in, they're also put in that particular box as well, correct?
No, they're not.
Oh, okay. How's that handled?
Okay, you walk in, you place. Your ballot at the machine. Once it's scanned into that machine, it's in the machine, it's not going anywhere. We can't open the machine.
Oh, you're talking about. I, okay, I got.
On election, that's right, on election day. On election day. Mm-hmm. That machine is not to be open to remove anything. Until close of election, uh seven P M. Those ballots that are in the machine, once you come in, you scan it. They are taken out. And they are scanned in. And I can't recall the name just yet, what it's titled on the machine. But you cannot take those ballots and put them with the mail-in ballots. You cannot do that. By law, you can't do that. You cannot do it. So those ballots that are scanned into the machine, they are counted. They go in a separate pile. The mail-in ballots are scaled, scanned in a different machine, right there, at the polling place. Those mail-in ballots. Are scanned and they're placed in a separate pile. And that's when the they're counted. We don't count them, the machine counts them. It knows exactly how many ballots were cast. So we don't have to sit and do a hand count, not at all.
All right, cool. Thank you so much. I understand that. Thank you so much.
Any more questions?
I don't have any more questions in this area at this time.
No, no more questions.
Um but as we go on with the agenda, I do have a question, but not in this area. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments they want to share?
What, you know, which I was just gonna ask, when would be the, on the next item on the agenda, the next meeting date?
Uh yeah, I um, we could, we, I uh might be easiest to set that right now, everyone, or does everybody have? I know you said you don't have your calendar, uh Chair Williams.
What?
Have my calendar now.
Do we want to try to set while we're all together, or do you want to try to set it via email? What's easier?
We can, we can make an attempt to do that now. I mean, it's not that many of us and hopefully. Um, you know, we can get that done and then we can send out an email confirmation. But certainly if anyone has a conflict after today and it needs to be changed, then we can look at another date.
Um what about, well, I'm available on the sixth. Um we're looking at September, so the sixth, that's the day before your deadline, Chair Williams, for the headshots and bios. September sixth.
September sixth?
Yes, that's a Wednesday.
Yes. Let's see, um. Um Mrs. Sojourner?
Yes.
Are you still, are you still there?
September sixth, uh what day of the week is that?
September sixth is Wednesday.
I'm sorry?
It's a Wednesday, I believe.
Yes, it's on a Wednesday.
That will be fine. I had promised to have my my computer problems fixed by then, hopefully.
Okay.
Yes, that that's, you can tell them that's okay with me. That's a good date.
Uh Board Member Sojourner says that's a good date.
Okay, it's a good date for me as well.
Uh Board Member Lundie?
Yes, I made the suggestion for the date. It's a good date for me. Keep in mind our other members' um time for her that was better. Um Liz, yeah, that's a good date for me, but I think she said four or five o'clock.
Yes. That was Ms. Saunders, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, I've made a note of that.
Uh the time is good too, any any time during the day, in the evening.
Okay, uh. Around around four P M, is that good for you?
Yes, this is, Board Member Lundie is good for me. Four or five is good.
Either or, Sojourner agreed to either either time, four or five is good.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
I I'd say we do four, and this is a town clerk. I'd say we do four unless. Unless five works better for everybody. If four works for everybody, that'd be my my recommendation, but whatever the pleasure of the board is.
Yeah, four works best for me, yeah.
All right, that sounds good. It sounds like we're all in agreement, so therefore um. The next, is it going to be a virtual meeting? Are you all okay with a virtual meeting?
I'm good either way.
The basis, Mister Genovich, that um I prefer in person, but I will do my best to make sure my computer is working for virtual. Okay?
Okay.
Or and if it's not working, we can still uh do the phone uh with you. That, it seems to be working now, so if your computer is not working, um and I certainly understand that. You know, we can still put you on speakerphone and you can still still have your comments and input.
Uh Bo- Board Me- Board Member Sojourner, do you have a um? Uh we can talk about this offline too if needed. Do you have a desktop computer or a laptop computer?
It's a laptop.
Okay, may maybe one, maybe in these next, before our next meeting. Uh if we can figure out a time, maybe you could maybe come in and one of our team members can uh help you get set up on it somehow.
Okay, I was gonna suggest that. I was gonna call you after the meeting and suggest that. Okay, I can do that.
Okay, yeah, we are, we can, we can try to, between now and the next meeting, we can see if we can get that, get you uh uh connected.
Yes.
Okay, so it looks like we're set for Wednesday, September sixth at four P M for our next virtual meeting.
Okay.
Will we have a vote?
Uh Mister.
I second it.
We're in agreement, thank you.
Uh Mister Jeffries had his hand raised, uh Chair Williams.
Yes, Ray, how can I help you?
Yes, I just wanted to adjust the comment from candidate Councilmember Lund. She asked in the comments, can candidates ask a question?
They can ask a question, um. They can do it via email. Or they can call into the town, but I think it would. I think it should be done by email. As a matter of record.
Yes, and I think, Boy Williams, that question, any questions like that need to be directed to the entire board. Is that correct, Mister Charnovich?
Uh that is correct. I I don't know the um. Yeah, I don't know the exact nature of the question, but um yes, I would say yes, the. We need to figure out a way to get the question to all the board members. Uh that can be done after this meeting or or whenever, but yes. I would like for all board members to see, see a candidate question.
I would like to suggest that if it's sent. Uh by email. That at the earliest convenience, uh it be sent out right away. To the, to the members. So that they can see. The respond, the the question and the response.
I agree.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Agreed.
I didn't hear the the original question regarding. Um was it a question regarding some of the candidates?
Uh, yeah, yes, a um. I'll try to summarize, uh a candidate posed a question in the chat of our, on the computer screen. If um they could ask a question in this forum. And uh correct, if I'm wrong, Chair Williams, it was indicated that the uh best means to do that for the course of the business today. Is to convey the question to me in writing if possible, and then I will share that question and answer with the board of. Of um of elections. Um is that a fair way to say it, Chair Williams?
It's correct.
Did you, did I explain that correctly, uh Chair, uh Board Board Member Sojourner?
Yes. Yes, okay. All right. That sounds fine to me. That sounds fun.
Okay, thank you.
No, thank you.
Uh Mrs. Lundie, uh Board Member Lundie?
Yes, thank you, Chair, I mean, thank you, um Clerk um Charnovich. So um to make this easier, I mean, I would have a suggestion, um. Uh set up an email, elections, elections board, election board at bladensburgmerlin.org. That way Mister um, um our liaison, Mister Charnovich, as well as the board members could see it all at the same time instead of. You know, one email going to one person and him relating it to us. I don't know how much that, it's probably not a problem for him, but so we can all get it at the same time. Is it possible for a um? Email address to be set up that says electionboard@bladensburgmerlin.org, because we need to let the public know. And for our candidates, if they have any questions, who would they submit their questions to? And that that answer would be to directly to the um Board of Elections. For the town. And then I have a question for Mister Charnovich with respect to, uh because I didn't see it in the agenda. Maybe so, we talk about our next agenda item or for next meeting, to talk about the upcoming training. Um for board members. But I do see we haven't finished the agenda yet anyway, on the other matters related to October second. Thank you.
Sure, I think, I think we're o- uh, to answer your first question, um, I think we're okay, as lo- as long as, you know, I'm disseminating all the information to all individual board members simultaneously in your, in your, uh, to the, in an email. Um, I think creating a new email might be a little, uh, unnecessary, I think, be, um, more, maybe more time, maybe more time consuming than we need to do. I, it can, it can all be sent at the same time to everyone. Um, and the second, and the second question is, um, I'm currently in the process of solidifying the, uh, all the details regarding the voting machines. And that, and that, that, that quote also includes training on the, on the, is that, is that the training you're talking about, uh, Board Member Lundie?
Yes, sir.
Yes, yeah, so that, that's currently being worked on, but the date and time is not, is not set yet. Um, I want to say, and maybe Chair Williams, uh, I know twenty twenty one's a long time ago. I thought I read, um, I thought I read that you, the, the, the board had training on like September twenty ninth la- in twenty twenty one. I'm not sure if that was on point late. Um, I know the election was on October fourth, I think, um, in, in twenty twenty one. Um, but I guess I'm just pointing out a sense of timing of when the training occurred, um, yeah, last time. Does that recall anything, um, uh, Chair Williams or Mrs., uh, Chair, or Board Member Sojourner?
No, I don't remember.
Oh, that's all right. Yeah, I think I saw that in the minutes, in minutes, just, but just to give you a sense, Mrs., uh, Mrs. Lundie, whenever it, uh, when it happened.
Okay.
All right.
Let me, let's just add that the training is very easy, very simple. It's not, it's not lengthy. You can ask mem- uh, questions of the person that's doing the training and they are well versed in what you need to do or not do. Um, it's not four or five hour training. It doesn't take that long. You socialize longer than you di- than you get trained. I'm serious, serious. It, I think we, it was probably less than an hour or a half hour. It doesn't take that long. It's very simple. It, the training was easy, not hard. Um, and just to add a little extra. Once all the, uh, what do you call it, um, everything, once everyone has voted and the doors are closed and locked, turn, and you open the back of the machine and there's buttons back there that will give, pull, it will be like a cash register tape. And it will tell you Ward one, Ward two, and the number of votes for each person that's on the ballot for wards one and two. Very simple. It's very easy, um, not difficult at all. Um, so I would, I would say to be on the safe side for in-person training, just set aside an hour just to be on the safe side, because you may have questions than the next person.
That's, that's a great, great, great perspective to know. Thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you.
That's like bikini. Yeah, and then, you know, the pink one was like there or something. Those two were like they kept up for probably everything, like. Yeah, no, I know, that buddy, yeah. Um.
Are we part of this? Jeffries, Ray, your phone is unmuted.
Uh, somebody's, uh, Ray, I think you're unmuted, Mr. Jeffries? On unmute. Um, that was our finance department. Sorry about that.
Okay, are there any more questions?
I don't have any. We can go on.
Okay, um, are we ready for the next section? Uh, Mr. Chonovich, are you there?
Uh, oh, yes, 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 Chair. I'm sorry, somebody was, uh, somebody was asking me a question. Um, they poked their head in my door, uh, Ma- Ms. Kamono in our front office. I'll, I'll get back to you on that, Ms. Kamono. Um, yeah, so our next, um, so I think we, 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 uh, Chair, we, we jumped down to candidate biographies and we set a deadline, so we're good there. Um, um, did you want to ju- did you, we, we didn't talk about, uh, number, Agenda Item five A, Election Day Shifts? Um, I know that was an item that was talked about by everybody at the, at twenty twenty one. Is that, is that an item you wanted to possibly talk on, touch on today, or do we can, uh, we can, uh, take that up on September sixth as we get closer to the election and people know their schedules, um?
Yeah.
That makes.
Yeah. I think it makes, because a lot can change between now and September, and it, between now and October second.
Yep, and Ms., Ms., uh, uh, Board Member Saunders will be here too, so.
Good. And then as far as, um, the candidate biographies, I think we've already touched on that. And for Item C, we are, we talked about a few miscellaneous items.
We did, we did, um. Did anyone else have any, and we, we scheduled our next meeting for September sixth at four P M. Um, did anyone else have any miscellaneous items? On the, on the board?
No, I didn't.
Um, I had an item, a miscellaneous item. Um, as it relates to the stipends for the meetings, the, the meetings, the training and the election day, would that be going into the election day shifts, or would that be talked about at the next meeting?
I'm sorry, would you say that again?
Um, regarding the, um, stipends for the board, uh, the stipends for the board, would that be in relationship to our meetings that we attend, our training and on election day, and would that be related to the election day shifts as well? I guess that's for Mr. Chonovich. The liaison.
Yeah, I'm actually working on, uh, what the, the compensation is going to be authorized. Uh, the short answer to your question, Board Member Lundie, is um, I'm gonna be asking the council to, uh, uh, pass a resolution for the Board of Supervisors compensation. That'll be done at their, at their, uh, September eleventh, uh, council meeting, upcoming meeting. Um, but that amount's gonna be set, it's gonna be set then. Um, to answer your question?
Yes, and does that include, um, we, we were talking about election day shifts, we're gonna talk about the next meeting. Would that include the volunteers or that has, or they're not related?
Well, we're all volunteers. However, we serve as Board of Election Supervisors. Um, they don't differentiate how I don't, I'm not sure how I want to word this. Um, I don't know what each person receives. It's not discussed. And your, your compensation for your, your time, you don't receive that same day of election that is mailed to you, or you can pick up your check. That's the way it has been in the past. And as far as compensating you or, or the board members, I think what you receive is a combination of everything that we do. With, and it's all built into that one, one check or stipend that you receive. I don't know if that actually answers your question.
Oh, yeah, I was, yeah, I got, yeah, Ms., oh, Chair Williams, thank you so much. I was clear about that part. Um, but with respect to the election day shift, is that for us, or is that just for the volun- is that for the, because I know in the email I saw from the town, it talked about, we need volunteers. I know we all volunteer, but we're gonna be getting a compensation. But I'm trying to find out what does the election day shift consist? I think I know, but I just wanted to find out for clarification purposes.
Okay, the shift, because it's a long day, seven A M. to seven P M. And if it's broken up into increments of four or five hours until you get to the end of the day. However, if at all possible, of all Board of Election uh, chairs are required to stay after seven P M. to get the ballots in order. So, it is a long day, and that's why, um, there are, are election day shifts, so that you're not, not, so that everyone who is a Board of Election Chair person is not there from seven in, in the morning to seven or eight at night. That is a very long day. For instance, I can use myself as an example. I'm an early morning person. I'm always up three, four o'clock in the morning. So I take the first shift. I'm usually at the Town Hall by six thirty, quarter to seven. And I will leave about twelve, one o'clock. But I come back before six o'clock or around six o'clock and stay for the counting. Even though we're not doing it manually, but it's still counting. The machine counts it. We still have to open up ballots that come through the mail. So within that time period, when I'm ready to leave at twelve, one o'clock, somebody else needs to be there before I leave to pick up the next shift from twelve to three, and then somebody else will be there from three to, to seven. That, that's kind of a rough estimate of how the shifts are broken up.
Yeah, excellent. And so my follow-up question to that would be, um, before I know we're trying to get out of here, my follow-up question to that would be, so for the election day itself on the second, we are setting up the day before on that particular day that, early that morning?
We can set up the day before, but we, you would certainly know what your shift is a, a couple of days, three, at, at least three or four days before election day. So you will know, and you have time to make arrangements or plans, whatever it is you need to do.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you.
Sure.
Your comments. Thank you.
Uh, Ms., and, uh, and Board Member Sojourner asked if, um, she could hear the question, so, so I can try to, um, so I can try to convey, um, the question was related to when, when the setup is done for the election itself, if it's done that, that early morning or if it's done a day in advance. Um, does that, does that answer your question, uh, Board Member Sojourner?
Yes, okay, yes, it does. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And the que- the answer was, we could do it the day before or the day of. Did we make a, we haven't made a decision yet? Or what has been the tradition, and if, if you want to look at it that way? Ms. Williams, I don't know if you even, if you said that. I'm sorry if I missed it.
No, no problem. I can answer you. If the machines are there, which, excuse me, the voting machines usually arrive the day before. They just mo- they are on wheels, so they move around. And we can place them wherever. The tables inside of Town Hall where we, where the Town Hall meetings are located, all the chairs are moved out of the way. And we will have table set up for Ward one and Ward two. We will have the computer printout for Ward one and Ward two. We have the boxes with your, uh, voter registration card in it. And it's for Ward one and Ward two. Actually, it's the same printout for each ward. We just have to go down the list. So when you come in, you give me your name and you tell me what ward you're in, then I go to the box, look for your card, ask you to verify and sign. Then we give you your ballot, tell you to go to the next table and complete your ballot. Then you go to the machine and it scans in. That's the procedure.
All right.
So the, sure, so the tables can be set up in the, in the day before, as long as there's not a meeting or something else going on. Those tables should be set up the day before or very early in the morning. We don't set them up. Someone else comes in and sets up the tables. Or they will move them wherever we want them to be placed.
All right, thank you.
Oh, uh, uh, Chair Williams, to add on to that, um, I would say, looking at calendars and things, I would say, um, the, the towns, town staff would look to have the, you know, the, for the, the room set up for the election the week of September twenty fifth, uh, before the, before that Friday, which is the twenty ninth. Uh, Ma- Ms. Kamono pointed out in the chat that the day before the election is on a Sunday, so, um, um, yeah.
The table.
Yeah, I would say our goal will be to have everything set up by Friday, the twenty ninth.
Yes, absolutely. And then we need to make sure that the machines a- arrive on Friday.
Okay, excellent.
Yes, thank you, Chair. That'll be the plan.
Good. Any more questions?
No, Chair, no.
No, Chair, none from Lundie at this time.
Uh, okay. So before we, before we adjourn, Chair Williams, I would say just a quick, uh, quick point of order, um, just to say that we did it, um, for item, let's, can we take a four, uh, with three of us on the call, Ms. Saunders, uh, Ms. Saunders departed? Um, would you mind taking up a vote to table Item four, uh, Chair Williams, uh, the certification until September sixth, just so we have it on the record? Um, if that, does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Thank you. Um, can we get a, a first, a, a, a motion and a second?
I second it. This is Sojourner. I second the motion.
Thank you, uh, Council, uh, Councilmember, uh, I mean, Board Member, Board Member Sojourner. So you saying Councilmember. Um, can, uh, can anybody say aye?
Aye.
We have the motion, Mr. Chonovich, from a board member?
Yes, we did. Sojourner did.
She seconded, but who made the motion?
Mr. Chonovich made the motion.
Oh, Mr. Chonovich, can you make the motion or has to be one of us?
Uh, I guess as a, I guess as a point, I guess as, as a point of order, I, um, I made this, I made, I made this suggestion that you, uh, table number four until the September sixth meeting. And then I would recommend that, um, I would say that, well, Ms. Sojourner should make the motion in this case. And then either, uh, Ms. Lund, uh, Board, Councilmember, I'm sorry, Board Member Lundie or Board Member, Board Chair Williams can, uh, make the second. Does that answer your question, Councilmember, Board Member?
Yeah, so I will, um, I will second the motion that Ms., um, Sojourner made to move, but, um, based on your recommendation, um, for the to go over the candidate filing the applications. What is it called? The candidate? Certification of candidates, correct. Thank you so much.
All right, so and then, uh, can we can, can I call for ayes?
Aye.
Any nays? No, the ayes have it. Okay, great. That, thank you, Chair and everyone.
You're welcome.
Okay, have we adjourned the meeting?
Um, I make a motion if there is no other business for the good of the order that we adjourn the meeting.
I second it.
So, uh, we have a motion by a a a Board Member Lundie and seconded by Board Member, uh, Sojourner to adjourn the meeting at approximately three ten P M. Uh, we call for the ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it. All right, everyone, we we did it.
Yeah, we did. We did. Thank you so much for all your help. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Channovich. Look forward to seeing you.
Thank you, thank you for your patience. I appreciate it. And, Mr. Channovich, I will contact you so I can get some help before the next meeting.
That sounds great, and thank you, everybody, for your time and, uh, and efforts and everything else. And we will, uh, talk to everybody on the sixth and likely likely beforehand. So uh, thank you very much, everyone. Have have a great day.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.